This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, The Star-Lazare and Highland Park Planet on January 8, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law by editor to my right and left of council chambers. Chief, can you lead us in the pleasure relations?
We do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilmember Pistone?
Here.
Councilmember Vargas?
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw?
Here.
Borough Administrator Huber?
Here.
Council report, Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies, everyone. My name is Phil George and I am here to the Public Safety Committee. Wish everybody a safe and enjoyable Saturday and Carnival event. Hope the temperatures and mild weather for a change. Please enjoy it safely. In the police department, we hopefully will be seeing two police officers very soon. Public Safety Committee interviewed candidates recently. Commissionerial officers were made to officers with experience and law enforcement to fill in our police force in coming year. A hiring process for police officers has a number of steps, but hopefully we'll be able to announce that within the next meeting or soon. However, the police department wants and we need to warn our residents of the growing threat of many kinds of online and telephone scams, which are being enabled by the current instability at the federal government level. There are threats of license immigration, Medicaid and Medicare cuts, threats to Social Security and IRS shakeups, and the scams are proliferating rapidly. We need to protect our neighbors from threats of federal agents, but the scams for programs like Social Security, Social Security disability for children, Medicaid and Medicare, IRS, they use phone and telephone internet, phone and internet access to claim your own money and try to get you to link it to pay, and then they clean out your account. These agencies do not use phone or internet payments. They communicate by mail or you link to their official websites. The police department is working with Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office to possibly sponsor a presentation shortly with more details that will keep me posted on. With regard to the Highland Park Library, we had several new part-time library assistants to add to the cadre of train staff to assist all our users with selection, internet access, and programming. Many of us will also welcome the return of the book drop on North Sixth, which had come through to the base panport recently. That book drop was so popular, people tried to use it when it was out of commission during construction and wrapped up against damage. The library will be hosting the closing exhibit and presentations for the Windows of Understanding Program, which has been showing in Highland Park, Brunswick, and touching in other venues. That will be held on March 26th at the library. The entrance will be on North Sixth. It will be in the media room. This is the first time we're hosting the closing of this growing program, which focuses each year on a different theme of understanding of differences in sameness, diversity, and hate, violence, and peace. The participating artists and some of their works will be present, and awards will be given out. For some users of the library, please be advised that the hoopla e-learning library may system may be discontinued soon at the library. The service, which used to fit Highland Park's needs and wants, has been outgrown in our membership and other online libraries. Our collaborations has made the service less than adequate for our growing needs. The library continues to add cardholders and electronic cardholders, and I urge you to visit the website, which has been approved, to see that there are multiple events for all ages and interests almost every day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pistone?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Jason Stelmac. I chair the Health Human Services Committee. First up, I wanted to just mention that there have been a number of cases of measles reported in America, including a few in New Jersey. So I want to encourage our residents to make sure that they themselves and their children have received the M R vaccines and any others that are recommended. They're safe, effective, and time-tested. Please talk to your doctor with any questions. Next, happy to announce the Human Relations Commission's Flag Raising Event for the year having scheduled. The Flag Raising dates are Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. We'll be holding the Caribbean American Heritage Flag Raising from 6:00 PM to 6:45. On Wednesday, June 11th of this year, there will be the Pride Month Flag Raising from 6:00 PM to 6:45. And on Thursday, June 19th, there will be the GT Flag Raising from 5:00 PM to 6:45. All these events will be held at the Highland Park Community Center. It's a place where we can count on us. There's always great events, and I hope to see you there. And staying with the Human Relations Commission, I'd like to thank Carolyn Headig for stepping up to join the commission. Her appointment is on tonight's agenda, and I look forward to working with her. And we'd just like to note that for anyone interested in joining this web commission, we saw a number of vacancies. So if anyone is interested in working on cross-cultural education, understanding events, please submit a volunteer application. Just available on the Borough's website, borough.com. Next, I'd just like to talk about our upcoming food distributions. Free groceries will be available from HP Gisahood every Tuesday and Wednesday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Zone 16 Center on 600 Madison Street. And we also have a Highland Park Food Entry Distribution, which will take place on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month from 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM and 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM. And Saturdays of those weeks from 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM. All of these are at the Highland Park Community Center, 220 South Sixth Avenue. And Mayor, that is my report for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. She's been sitting there, and we're getting ready. But I'm ready. My name is Matthew Hirsch. Good evening, everybody. I chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, and so my report is going to involve areas within that portfolio. The Highland Park Environmental Commission will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, March 5th at 8:00 PM on Zoom. You can find the link at www.hpboro.com. There's a fairly extensive agenda there, but please, please attend to learn more about work that the Environmental Commission oversees in the Highland Park Meadows. Continued work on understanding and analyzing the prospective Greenway Trail between Johnson Park and Thompson Park. Exploration of the effective leaf blowers, a community solar program, and so much more. If you want to be involved in environmental stewardship, this is the place for you. These meetings are free, so please come, as all of them are. So please come and get familiar with what they're doing. One of the other items that is all-encompassing of my portfolio, which includes Sustainable Highland Park and obviously the Environmental Commission, is honoring Mary Denver, who was a longtime resident in Highland Park, who stewarded the native plant sanctuary. Mary passed two years ago, and we are working to install a commemorative bench. This is really one of her favorite places in Highland Park, and she just devoted so many years of detail and attention to making sure that this was a beautiful place where people could go for not only environmental exploration, but also quiet reflection. So this bench is really designed to pay tribute to Mary in that respect. So we are, we are working closely with the industry team to acquire the bench and also to commemorate the site. So this has been something that the Environmental Commission has been doing. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee, which is also under my portfolio. Shade Tree Advisory Committee is an incredibly important commission that advises and makes essential feedback on the borough's tree planting programs. These street trees are an enormous part of what make the borough what we are. We take pride in our tree canopy and making sure that our tree coverage is healthy and without interruption. And you know, right now, I think we're seeing a lot of, a lot of trees are aging out. A lot of them were planted at the same time, maybe 100 years ago, maybe 120 years ago, in line with when the streets were, were, were built and the houses were built. So it is time to continue our work to make sure that our tree canopy is replenished and full. And so in that respect, I do just want to point out to items while May on the consent agenda, which advertisers received a bid for our 2024, 2025 tree maintenance contract. This would, this would result in the planting of 100 new trees in April and May, which is incredible. Letters have gone out to the residents of homes where these trees will be planted in front, which is on the parking strip or the burbs, as Councilman George likes to say, within the public right of way. The planting is paid for by Highland Park's Tree Replacement Fund, and residents are invited to donate any tax deductible donation amount to the fund, 100% of which goes to planting and maintaining the street trees that bring shade beauty and so much more to Highland Park. If you have any questions about this fund or want to be more involved, please email me at M H E R S H, that's M Hirsch@hpboro.com. Just kind of adjacent to this is the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is sponsoring an important webinar coming up called Caring for Our Trees. That's on Monday, March 24th at 7:30 to 8:30 PM. During this open online meeting, SAC will answer any questions and offer tips on how to help young trees grow and thrive. Obviously, the first two years after tree planting are critical in not only maintenance, but also care and watering. So it's really important that we get over that hump to make sure that we don't have to go out and replant trees. SAC will meet next week on Zoom, March 12th, 7:30 PM. You can find the link at www.hpboro.com. The Highland Park Gas Leaf Blower Task Force is a NACEN committee composed of selected members of the Environmental Commission, Sustainable Highland Park, and the Board of Health. And they're hosting a free community program on gas leaf blowers and the health risks and alternatives, and health risks that may arise and potential alternatives. Definitely worth watching if you are interested in this field. I think during, you know, we've seen an increase in gas power leaf blower usage over the years, and I think during, during the pandemic, we really saw that, you know, with people being home, we saw, we saw the level of activity that can occur in town, not only contributing to noise pollution, but there are, they do, these particulates that can be hazardous. However, we also understand that this is a fiber workforce, you know, a segment of our workforce, and so we need to look at this. We need to look at this issue holistically and carefully. But this event is a must-watch, and that's on Thursday, March 20th, 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the new community room at the Highland Park Public Library. Again, that's Thursday, March 20th, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, community room. Sustainable Highland Park met last week. Just a few items to just update. We continue to plan for our May 4th Earth Day event, which coincides with the Street Fair, the Council of Health, which we'll get into. We are going to have a table set up. So this is going to be the same situation as previous years. It will be held on the avenue, not at the environmental center. We are part of the Street Fair. We're going to be there. We're going to be setting up our table at 10:00. The event starts at 11:00, and planning is progressing particularly well. We are, we are working, bringing in local vendors, vegan, vegan food, vegetarian food, and the themes for Earth Day, there's usually a theme. We're discussing activism and resilience, which is critical right now, particularly. New ideas we've considered for this Earth Day include electric bikes. There'll also be a fashion show collaborated with the High School Environmental Club students, and much, much more. So please stay tuned as William has him. Just go to Spurgesburg. I did just want to thank Sustainable Highland Park Chair Tina Weiss House, who is, who's moving on from being chair. She will still be a very active, inspiring, and leading member of the committee as well. But thank you to Rose DeRozzo, a longtime member for stepping up, and Rose really gets it, and she understands the balance that we have to take between our environmental advocacy and also making sure that Sustainable Highland Park is Highland Park's green team, making sure that we're in line with the points system that Sustainable Jersey provides that opens us up to more grants, environmental-related grants, and other recognition, and other forms of recognition. That is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Matt Hale. I chair the Economic Development Committee. Just to brief one thing, a reminder that the farmer's market is now open on Fridays. I know it's still pretty chilly out there, but please come out and support and contribute vendors. They're coming out and also want to get an early start. As Councilman Hirsch mentioned, the Street Fair is May 4th, so May the 4th be with you and come to the Street Fair. Today is also International Pund Day. It's March 4th, so I threw that out there. So even though it is cold, you are going to start seeing our flock of V O scooters returning from their winter hibernation. The flock is pretty small now, but it's going to increase over time as the weather gets warmer. So now is the time to remember to try and, it takes some time getting used to, for both the scooter flock and the regular pedestrians as they first come out of hibernation. So please take it slow and careful out there. Especially want to remind parents that scooters are not meant for kids under 18, so please don't give them your credit card to feed to the bees. I don't always wear a helmet no matter how old you are. But seriously, it's a very safe beginning and middle scooter season. Real quick, as expected, we got word that our fourth year funding for the Neighborhood Participation Program has been approved. Again, it's not unexpected, but it is nice to make it official. As I mentioned last week, this year we're rolling out some new MPP programs, like porch maintenance for residents, and ideally our first antique car show to take place over the summer. Next up, we have formed an initial stakeholder committee about Third Street Pedestrian Plaza. This group's going to help, help us choose a consulting firm, provide some guidance to them on the process, and give some overall direction. It's an initial group. Obviously, it'll expand as we go throughout the entire community. The committee is comprised of Rebecca Hirsch, the Executive Director of Nishon Park, Aaron Weiman, who is a business owner right on Third Avenue, Alvin Chen, who's on the planning board, also lives on South Third, Peter Bilton from Safe Walking and Scything, and Rebecca Hand, the Chair of the Planning Board. So it's really great to start seeing some, some real steps headed towards, towards the public process on South Third, exciting stuff. Also to let folks know, and to say for all those who celebrate, Pardón is coming up on March 13th to 14th. I do want to remind folks that one of the things that happens during Pardón is that people go around and deliver something called Nishlok Mano, which is gifts. It can be candy. It can be a variety of different things. But what that means is that there is minivans with kids jumping out of them to deliver stuff. So if you are driving one of those minivans, please be careful of people behind you. If you're seeing one of those stopping suddenly because they didn't know if it was 346 or 351, please, let's, let's try and be careful out there. Again, as we go and deliver those later this month. And then lastly, I just wanted to offer my congratulations to the mayor. She is being honored by the Highland Park Conservative Temple on Sheikh Ahmed at their annual gala this weekend on May 9th. The mayor's been an amazing champion of Highland Park's Jewish community in so many ways that if I were to list them all, I would break my promise for a short report. But believe me, they will talk about them at the event. This honor and award is a recognition of all she does to lift up and support not just the Jewish community of Highland Park, but all of our Jewish community. So I just wanted to say congratulations, Mayor. It's a great honor, and thank you for being here. That's all I got.
All right. Councilmember Vargas?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Nora Vargas, and I chair the Recreation and Arts Portfolio. So for some recreation updates, Summer Camp Registration opened on February 28th. So that's ongoing. The youth theater can fill up immediately with 40 participants already. There are camp employment opportunities still available, and the interviews begin mid-March, so please reach out to the community center, and we'll give out information a little bit later on. Winter Youth Baseball Playoffs are in progress. The championship games happening on March 9th, so that sounds exciting. Spring programs are going to include youth sports, flag football, baseball, softball, wrestling, tennis, soccer, and basketball, free art classes as well. The aforementioned youth theater and adult fitness and pickup sports. And the HP 5K is coming up on May 4th with the, with the Street Fair that we're having. So if you want to register for that, please go to www.runsignup.com/HP5K. And the information can also be found on the main three Highland Park website. For community center events coming up, there's going to be a St. Patrick's Day luncheon on March 18th at 12:00 PM with white music and a treat at lunch. There will also be a free diabetes and mood care lecture on March 26th between 1:30 and 2:30, which will be hosted by HIC Meridian Health. A Matter of Balance program will be, is ongoing until April 15th, which helps older adults improve mobility and confidence. If you're still interested in that, please reach out to the Recreation Center for a seat. And any information that I've mentioned, you can reach out to them at 732-819-0052. Further state of dates for events coming up, Memorial Day Parade on May 26th, the fireworks on July 3rd, and the main date of July 6th, and the Parxap Summer Concert Series, who are working on that, and stay tuned for the lineup this summer. There's also some great events coming up. The, sorry, one second, I lost my plane. Okay, here we go. Okay, the next Arts Commission meeting will be on March 13th at 7:00 PM. That meeting takes place in person at the Highland Park Library. Members of the public are welcome to attend. The Historical Commission meeting will be held in person here at Borough Hall on March 20th at 7:00 PM. As I understand, it will be going through some of the archives here, so that should be exciting. They're still undergoing the pre-grant process through the New Jersey Council for the Humanities and Community History Program, which Terry Over has had the time to review. So we're very hopeful that they're going to be able to come and work the community projects and get the grants. And I would like to mention the personal side. I had an opportunity to attend a ribbon-cutting at the new hair salon on Mariden Avenue called Bloom Custom Hair Color and Design. Very impressive and beautifully designed decorated business located at 47 Mariden Avenue. I'm excited to announce that I actually had an appointment for myself this time of day. So I might score me a look at the next, I don't know, little dance or thing.
Supporting local?
That's right. That's right. While we were there, I also checked out the new place next door called Dora P. A. U., which is a permanent makeup studio with eyelash eyebrows and permanent makeup. Check that out, too. We'll see what happens. Right? Hey, I'll get my eyelashes, eyebrows, hair done. You never know. And what's the shooting? And my nails done. That's right. But you know, what's interesting is that these businesses are women-owned businesses, and so they kind of complement Kinetics, which is another women's business owned right on the same strip, and La Casita as well. So it's very exciting to see that kind of diversity and empowerment on that strip of Raviin. There's also a lot of other women's businesses, but it seems that that stretch of Raviin is about wellness, self-care, and delicious food. So I'm here for it. I'm going to give it a try. This Friday, I'm going to be at the Borough School for Read Across America. So bright and early, I'm going to be reading a book to students in this Web Report class. I'm very excited because my kids are all grown up, and there aren't a lot of opportunities to read out loud. So very excited over that. That is my report for tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vargas. Council President Kim Cho Han?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephanie Kim Cho Han, and I chair Finance. The Finance Committee met last month, and I have received several questions from my colleagues and residents regarding kind of like the status of our federal funding and whether we have been impacted. So as of now, the answer is no, but not to get into the weeds. You know, some of our grants will be awarded over a three-year period, and our staff continues to apply and hope that the programs will remain available. The borough doesn't rely heavily on federal funding for our day-to-day operations. However, one of our key federal fundings is the CDBG Funds, which is through HUD, which is funded down to the county, who help support essential programs such as the food pantry as well as youth and seniors programs. Only time will tell how the situation develops as new directives are coming from Washington every day, and I will keep everyone updated on any changes. I attended the Governor's Budget Address. I encourage you to watch the entire address if you have the time. And speaking of the state, every year, hundreds of thousands of low and moderate income workers in New Jersey are eligible to receive a state-funded tax credit that can be worth more than $3,000 for some recipients, depending on the size of their family. Yet every year, there are thousands eligible to receive this tax benefit, which is called the Earned Income Tax Credit, or EITC, that don't end up claiming it according to the officials from the State Department of the Treasury. As a new tax filing season is underway ahead of the April 15 deadline, Treasury officials are urging all residents to take the time to determine whether you are among the estimated more than 700,000 residents eligible for the EITC. Quote, "New Jersey's EITC is a vital resource that provides much-needed support for many hard-working individuals and their families," said state treasurer. "Reducing tax burdens and increasing refunds puts money directly into the hands of those who need it most," she said. I attended the New Jersey Conference, the mayor's annual winter summit with the mayor. There were interesting conversations about the use of AI in local government. And I also want to extend my congratulations to the mayor for being honored this weekend by Highland Park Conservative Temple. I'm sorry I'm going to be able to miss it, but I'll be celebrating my mid-30s. Only we turn mid-30s once in life, so I got to re-celebrate my birthday. And then I want to thank, I want to thank my colleagues for a successful work session focused on our 2025 goals. And lastly, March 8th is International Women's Day, which dates back to 1908, when 15,000 brave female textile workers marched to New York City demanding better working conditions. Talk about courage. By 1975, the UN officially recognized it in the highs. So progress in equity and family balance, pay transparency in several states have been implemented. Laws requiring employees to the school's salary ranges and job posting, legislation protections for pregnant workers and employers, sponsored childcare initiatives. And the laws, despite progress in transparency, the pay gap increased for the first time in years in 2023, and workplace hurdles still exist. Gender pay gap widened for the first time in two decades. The US gender pay gap widened in 2023, with men, with women earning approximately 82.7 cents for every dollar earned by men, down from 84 cents in 2022. Economic disruptions, occupants, and caregiving responsibilities contribute to this setback. Under representation in leadership positions despite increased awareness Under representation in leadership positions, despite increased awareness, women, particularly women of color, remain significantly underrepresented in senior and executive roles. This disparity limits diverse perspectives in the decision-making process and memorialize systematic inequalities. So happy Women's History Month and happy International.
Thank you, Council President. Happy birthday. Now we go to our administrative report.
Good evening, Mayor. I have to kind of report this evening.
Okay, we're returning to your board.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, if you'd like, I have to go through some of the good procedures.
Sure, please do.
Thank you. To members of the public, we have implemented the new procedures on how we run our meetings. Let's just briefly go through it. The first is number ten on your agenda, public participation. You are, members of the public may ask any questions regarding any instructions or orders. The second opportunity the public may participate is number eleven. An either organism is requiring a second reading. Your questions are limited to the ordinance that is up for second reading. And then there's number fifteen, which is an opportunity for the public to speak on any topic that's relevant to the borough. Now, in each of these opportunities for the public to speak, the mayor will open up the opportunity for either individuals to comment or to question. And then the public portion will be closed. And once the public portion is closed, the mayor will either respond to the question or direct someone on the dais to respond to the question. And please note that once the public portion is closed, no members of the public may speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have also very brief reports. This past Monday, bright and early, I was at Barlow School to do Read Across America. They were so excited about me being there and reading to them. So it was, they were excited, I was excited to be there. So it was a good time that was had with that class and they, I learned from it, they learned from me. So Read Across America is always good for us to go into the schools and to read to these young ones. This past Saturday, the mayor's teen advisory group had their karaoke night. I stopped by and it wanted me was to sing and it was a good time. They were having a blast. I was happy to see that they're not only seriously working on just fundraising activities and other initiatives that would improve business in our downtown, but they took some time to have some fun. That was great. Speaking of the mayor's teen advisory, they are now raising money for Elijah's Promise in New Brunswick. So they're off to a great start and they want to make sure that people who suffer from food insecurity, that they make sure that they have food and toiletries and other needs. So kudos to the teen advisory. They're a very compassionate group and they're looking to improve quality of life for all. Stephanie, council president, mentioned that we went to the Conference of Mayors event. And I must say that Highland Park was one of the three towns that started working on the Arrive Together program. So we were, we were the pilot towns, Woodbridge, Perth Amboy, and Highland Park. And now they want to roll out the Arrive Together program across the state of New Jersey. So we are the pioneers in making it happen. And this year, they're hoping to not only roll it out across the state of New Jersey, but other states are also interested in this lifesaving program, the Arrive Together program. So kudos to U.C. and Highland Park for making it rise together. So such a successful program. And at the event, they also collaborating with, I collaborated with a bunch of different mayors to get ideas and see some best practices that they're doing in their different towns. And I'm going to keep in contact with some of them. At that event, we also had an opportunity to visit the Jets Arena. And it was really amazing to walk through the arena, to see where the players play, the fields and everything else, their lunchroom, locker room, was interesting. So it was a, it was a good day spent at the mayor's conference and both Stephanie and I had an opportunity to learn a lot. And I do want to say kudos to all the new business that's coming to our downtown. We attended the ribbon cutting at Bloom's and now that I hear that there's going to be a shop that does a whole bunch of other fascinating stuff, I'm going to be in our downtown quite a bit more. So that's my report and thank you. Now it's time for public participation. Twenty-one minutes, three minutes per speaker, limited to item on this agenda. Comments from persons attending in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. And Terry, how many people, if there's anyone?
We have four attendees on Zoom and one handoff.
Anyone from the public wishes to speak? See that there is none, we go to Zoom.
Okay, looks like phone number ending in four or five, if you want to state your name.
Hi, Lois Rubbing North Second, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Lois North Second Avenue. Okay, on tonight's budget, tonight, I guess it's the consent agenda. Would you, someone please explain Resolution twelve C, but three dash two five dash eight eight, authorizing purchase of police equipment with Whitmer Public Safety Group versus November that just passed, twenty twenty-four Resolution eleven dash two four dash two six two. Just Highland Park entered into a cooperative pricing agreement with Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System. What equipment was purchased at these two places or is this the same thing? Okay, that's right, you can't talk to me. And I guess at the hearing, I'm going to ask something about the beating municipal budget and I'll talk to you later when we're not talking about the agenda items. Thank you.
No, Mayor, that was the only handoff.
May I have a motion? See that there's no one else. May I have a motion to close public participation? Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Councilmember George, you clear to comment on three dash twenty-five dash eight eight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Phil George and I'm based on to the public safety agencies. This resolution is for purchase of non-firearms to replace some equipment and also upgrade some equipment in the police department. And I think the most important thing from a taxpayer standpoint is we're not paying for it. This is forfeiture money, money seized in drug deals, stolen cars that were then auctioned off through the prosecutor's office. We received a grant, which is a percentage of forfeitures through the middlesex county prosecutor's office, and this purchase is of twenty-one thousand to the lowest filed by bidder for all of the specifications that we bid for is being paid for solely with forfeiture money. The resolution in November that was referred to with Cranford is to join the cooperative purchasing so that we can take advantage of some of these group prices that are pretty few by the state.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ordinance that requires second reading. Please report that ordinance number twenty-five dash two one oh three.
In order to amending and supplementing Chapter two seventy-eight and seventeen, parking on street accessible parking spaces within the borough type park has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit to publication on Friday.
Next, we have items eleven A, an ordinance scheduled for final reading. The ordinance was amended by Chapter two seven eight dash one seven, accessible parking. Said accessible parking spot was already approved by ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero nine five. And I would like to ask the council for a motion to pull this ordinance.
Your Honor, I would move to withdraw twenty-five dash twenty-one oh three as it is redundant in way of the passage of twenty-four against twenty-nine five.
Second.
May I have a motion to pull ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-five dash twenty-one oh three? I'm sorry, rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Please report that ordinance number twenty-five dash two one oh four.
Counter your ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a caping, NJSA forty-eight point four dash forty-five point fourteen has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit of publication on Friday.
Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone and dress yourself. And if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand button. Anyone from public? Seeing as there's none, can we go to Zoom?
I don't have any hands on phones.
Okay, see, there's no one. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance number twenty-five dash two one oh four?
Second.
Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash two one oh four?
So move.
Second.
Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes. Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now we move on to the consent agenda. May I ask council members, if there's anything on the consent agenda date you would like to have pulled for consent or for a separate vote?
Oh, no.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, twelve A to twelve H?
So move.
Second.
Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Resolution requiring a separate reading. May I have a motion, resolution requiring a separate reading? May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution three dash twenty-five dash ninety-two, resolution to amend the twenty twenty-five municipal temporary budget?
So move.
Second.
Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
An appointment, Arts Commission, Amanda Ruins, may I have a motion to confirm?
So move. Seven.
Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Human Relations Commission, Carolyn Headick, planning board, Ken Ho, alternate number two, no confirmation needed. Now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject concluded by nine PM. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those who attended on Zoom. And we have no members of the public who wishes to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I see a handoff. Always loving having you here if you could just.
Hello, Lois here, North Second Avenue. I wonder why the change from in the agenda has no phone number fit on the front as it's always been for, well, since twenty twenty-one, when you started doing the redevelopment and the meetings, council meetings on Zoom and on phone. Suddenly, you have a totally separate page required for now, we'll be offering Zoom option. That's crazy. And through the technology fail, the meeting, of course, will proceed. But Mayor, I didn't, I did not hear anyone say do star nine for question or star six to unmute. I did not, you don't have the phone number or the site or the meeting number on the actual agenda as you used to. And what's amazing, since I was comparing to last November's agenda, someone has, or told the clerk, someone to put double spaces above the top of the agenda Borough of Highland Park, below that three lines where it says March fourth, twenty twenty-five, double spaced it. And this tremendous amount of waste, and then you've got a third page with just a few things on it when this information to do the phone and the Zoom should have been on the top of the first, I believe, or fit on, so it's on three pages. So that to me is a tremendous waste of borough space for people who have to print this out and no information, guidance to how to ask a question or unmute if you can. And the second question that's important is what is the status of the blue, of the blue, the bird flu? And is the state saying anything yet? And if it comes time when we can't feed birds, as former mayor Merrill begged us all to, how do you shoo away the birds? I tried that last year or the year before. And when you don't feed them either on time or at all, they leave thousands of calling, little white calling cards all over sidewalk, street, grass, and parked cars. So how does the state or the Board of Health want us to rid the area of birds?
Thirty seconds.
Let's stop feeding it, feeding them. And the third question is, what is the status of the dangerous falling apart Blue House at North Second Avenue? Thank you.
Anybody, anyone else? Sorry?
No.
See, there's no further. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So move, second.
Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han. Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
As it pertains to the bird flu, please go to the borough website and see the information that has been posted from the state of New Jersey and how you should or should not handle or deal with any of the birds. Thank you. May I have, and now we would like to move to executive session. May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution dash three, dash twenty-five, dash ninety-three? Executive session is litigation, Booteon versus Highland Park.
Motion.
Second. Rock call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to going to executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it.